Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Watson Place Hall. Thanks for coming to the rolling slow welcome. People are still coming in. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's a bit more special than our average monthly Village Tivoli Board meeting. But we're going to come to order now. This is the August 2023 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. It is 7:05. And I ask that folks to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're going to get right to our special guest tonight. We have with us from Teconic Resources for Independence, Executive Director Lisa Terraccone and John Rossi. And they're going to tell us about their organization and about the American Disabilities Act, which is now 33 years old. And I met them about a year ago when they sent a letter to all 30 municipalities in our county. And I picked up the phone and gave them a call. I said, hey, come in here and talk to me, please. I want to know about what you do and how Tivoli can live up to its obligations. And it's been a great year for us. I'm really glad to have you here tonight. So I'd like to turn the floor over to you. And we hope to let Lisa make a brief presentation. And we'd love it if you all have any questions. We could get into a Q and A and conversation about something that's very important to the Village Tivoli and the whole wide world. So Lisa, the floor is yours. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I guess I'll turn around now.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address this meeting tonight. And I'm really, John and I are very appreciative of the partnership that we have with the Village of Tivoli and Mayor. Yes, we met about a year ago. And John will kind of go over that. We had a project of, it's a kind of resource for independence, is our Disability Advocacy Partnership, which John will talk about, which led us to Joel. But a word about my organization. So I'm the Executive Director of Teconic Resources for Independence in Poughkeepsie. It's one of 41 independent living centers across the state of New York. Independent living centers, overall, the overarching message is to promote the full inclusion of persons with disabilities in all aspects of community life. So we are a disability rights organization. We provide services, referral, and direct services, referrals, and support for people with all types of disabilities. We have mental health advocacy. We provide benefits counseling. We do peer counseling. We have a special education program, which is a very robust program and growing by the moment, by the minute. During the COVID epidemic, there was a disproportionate impact on students with disabilities within not able to access learning platforms virtually. So we, our program was very busy. We, right now, we have just hired a new advocate, and the need far exceeds what I can provide, what we're doing, the best we can. All three of my advocates are just dedicated special education advocates. And we also have an architectural barriers consultation program. We call it ABC. And that individual, and I work with that individual, and John and I also, as part of DAP, work throughout Dutchess County to work with businesses to make sure they are compliant with the ADA. We provide technical support. We also do access surveys for businesses. And that is a fee for service. And we also provide a free community service as well. So that's the overarching mission of TRI. And we also partner, I am a new Executive Director, fairly new. I came on board about five weeks before the pandemic hit. So I moved up from Westchester and then the pandemic. And we were in lockdown. There was no guidance on how to manage an organization. You know, managing staff from home was very difficult. So it was, it was a, you know, very arduous first year. But I think one of my first objectives when I came on board as Executive Director was to form partnerships with advocates and other entities in Dutchess County. And one of my first partnerships was with John Rossi. And we formed the Disability Advocacy Partnership to address Title III noncompliance in Dutchess. So let me turn that over to you, John, and talk a little bit about DAP. And then we can segue into the ADA and a little more specifics about the titles of the ADA.
Thank you for having us here this evening. It's really a pleasure. As Mayor Griffin said, we've been meeting by and off, Lisa and I, with your mayor for about a year now. I'm just going to share real fast how Lisa and I met. It was about four years ago, three, four years ago.
Three or four.
I had, I was very, I didn't really know a lot about the American Disabilities Act. I really should, but I didn't. I say that because I was on a school board, I've been a trustee. But I got very upset in my own village when I saw parking spaces dedicated for drivers with disabilities, ADA compliant parking spaces, that had been in the village forever and provided the best accessibility from the parking lot into the village, which isn't, it is a nice thing to do, but it's also the law. And my village officials removed the spaces, took them aside, moved the, relocated the dedicated spaces for accessible, for accessibility, to a further distance from the entrance into the village. And they did that because they wanted to install electronic vehicle chargers. Now, I'm all for electronic vehicles, and I get that. But, you know, I don't, I'm not disparaging anyone who, you know, can afford an electronic vehicle, but, you know, maybe the person with the $35,000 Tesla doesn't need the space as much as, you know, someone like Lisa, right? So that's where, and where you go with that anger. You know, it just really bothered me. And the answer is, and Lisa will probably talk a little bit more about this, there are recent a lot of venues that you can go to. The, what I did learn very quickly is that the American Disabilities Act is a civil rights law, so it's under the purview of the Department of Justice. So I filed a complaint with the Department of Justice, but, you know, it's just one of 10,000, I don't know how many. And you know what? They contacted me. And I was shocked. And they said, this is a really interesting case. We want to pursue this. We're going to encourage your village that you've, you know, that you're filing the complaint against, that they should pursue mediation, and we'd like for you to pursue that path as well. And I said, sure. I said, I don't know that the village will. And they said, oh, we're pretty sure they will. And they did. And they said, you know, you're going to have to get an attorney. I'm like, oh, really? Well, if you can't find an attorney or you can't afford one, then you should work with a disability advocate. And that is how I found Lisa Terraccone, who we never met before. And this, we can't go into the details of the mediation, but it went on for about 18 months. And Lisa was by my side every minute during that. And it was very stressful because the village had attorneys and engineers. We had each other. And we did prevail.
And we had the monitor side do it.
And we had the monitor side, that's right, that's right. And then Lisa, shortly thereafter, said, you know, I'd like for you to join with me in a partnership. Lisa had a lot of experience in the Westchester County, in developing a partnership with municipalities and in, I said, well, that sounds great. So DDA is Dutchess Disability Advocacy Partnership. And one of the first tasks that we undertook was at the end of last calendar year, because every municipality is required by law to post on publicly, which means your website, a simple document that just says, hey, we don't discriminate against people with disabilities. You shouldn't have to say that, but that's what you have to say. You have to put it in writing. And here are the things that we're doing in our village, our municipality, our town, our city, that you should know about. And if you have an issue, here's who you can contact. So we said, hey, let's just make sure that all the municipalities in Dutchess County have this in place. And we had an intern working with us, who came back and reported to Lisa, it doesn't look like anybody does. We said, well, that can't be. And Lisa said, John, you better take a look at it. And there wasn't anybody. So we sent out these letters, saying, hey, you really should do this. You know how many people called us besides your mayor? Nobody. Nobody called your mayor. And he said, I'm sorry. You should come here and meet with me. And we did. And we've been working closely ever since. Now, we did hear from some others, but many we did not. And I don't know what it is about the ADA, when you share with people, well, this is something you should be doing, with the exception of your mayor, people get testy about it. So that's how we found our way of working with Lisa. That's how we developed DDA. And that is how we found our way to your mayor, and we've been introduced to some of your business leadership. And we'll talk about that more as well. So we're very appreciative to Tivoli. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Mayor Griffith, we invited Mayor Griffith to our Inclusion Festival on June 28th. So every year, well, two years now, TRI hosts an Inclusion Festival on the property of FDR in Hyde Park. And it's an event to raise awareness around disability, provide resources to attendees, our staff. We have information that we disseminate in all of our programs. And we usually have activities. And so this year, you know, given the fact that Mayor Griffith reached out to us and was responsive to our letter, we thought, let's showcase Mayor Griffith at our Inclusion Festival, because this is what inclusion looks like, right? It's a leader, a public official, who is a true public servant, who wants to do, who wants to, who wants to do the right thing. You know, when Joe was saying, we don't, we don't get it, why don't we get a lot of response from the letters we sent out? And when we talk to businesses, or we work with school districts, there's a lot of resistance, there's a lot of backlash, there's regarding providing accommodations for people with disabilities. And I think there's a lot of misinformation. There's terms thrown around like grandfathered in, we don't have to comply. The ADA itself does not have any governance. So it's incumbent on the person that's being discriminated against, and that it is discrimination when some people with a disability can't access a place of public accommodation. It's incumbent on that person to actually pay for an attorney and file a grievance. Well, with 65% unemployment rate within the disability community, people have the resources, okay? And attorneys don't take on these cases because there's no damages. They're only attorney's fees. And in Dutchess County, there is no Human Rights Commission to file a complaint. So we're pretty much locked out and in luck. But, so as I said, my, so we, Mayor Griffith, we interviewed him, we had a little conversation, John and myself. We talked about, we asked the mayor, you know, what does inclusion mean to you? And it was a, it was a perfect answer. It's about providing a welcoming, place-making community for everyone. You know, so Tivoli's got a lot of old buildings stuck, lots of, you know, difficult to make it accessible. The mayor could have said we're grandfathered in, but instead of saying that, he said, how can we be more welcoming? What can we do to work with you? And so that's why we're here tonight. We are working with the mayor. It's not going to happen overnight, but he's very receptive and open to our suggestions. And we'd like to see that with all our public officials. We understand it's difficult. It's 33 years after the passage of the ADA, and there's rampant noncompliance throughout this county. But we've seen resistance, we've seen, and people with disabilities themselves don't really file grievances for the reasons I've stated, or even write to their public officials. We, we do this, I, to my job, and John is an advocate, you don't hear that, it's discounted. So it's very discouraging. So it's just a pleasure to work with a real, a true public leader. And hopefully, we'll be able to generate more of those partnerships. But, so just a brief, the mayor wanted us to talk a little bit about the ADA, and I'm not going to delve into it too deeply. We did bring handouts with us. So for those of you who are, who would like to learn a little bit more about the five titles of the ADA, there's a printout in the back. And then I also have two other printouts. One is an access checklist, in terms of if there are any business owners here, or just, you know, in general, if you'd like to know what constitutes, what are the guidelines for accessibility? There's a checklist back there. It's a very simple one, not as extensive as the one in the DOJ, which is 25 pages long. We tried to simplify it, but it gives you measurements and just guidelines. And then, again, and as we mentioned, as I mentioned a few moments ago, it's very difficult to incorporate access, access compliance within older buildings. There's a fiscal impact, it's financially not feasible at times. It's very difficult for municipalities, towns to do this. But there are temporary solutions that you can incorporate while you're either applying for grant money, or working with your town board, or going through a bidding contract, or trying to draft a resolution. You can incorporate temporary solutions, which don't break the bank, and will try, will address some of the access issues that municipalities face. So the ADA, just briefly, has five titles. Glasses on here, I should have them by heart. Let me just. So there's employment, which is Title I. State and local government, Title II. Public accommodations, Title III. Telecommunications, Title IV. And then miscellaneous provisions, Title V. I'm just going to briefly go over titles two and three, because I think those are the most pertinent, that we're all familiar with. Title II is state and local government activities. So governmental buildings, state and local, need to make sure all the programs and buildings are accessible to people with disabilities. Vision, deaf, mobility, they're required to make reasonable modifications to make sure that we have, provide program access and accommodations to their constituents. And Title III is places of public accommodations. Theaters, restaurants, retail shops, hotels, any kind of private facility that's a public accommodation, a public place of accommodation, doctors' offices, homeless shelters, it goes on and on, need to make sure that they're accessible to people with disabilities. And as I mentioned a few moments ago, Title III, you know, John and I just produced a video, we were in the process of putting the finishing touches on it, called Main Street, Dutchess County. And if you go through, just pick a municipality, any municipality, they're all inaccessible. They're, all the main streets, you cannot get in buildings. I, you know, there may be one or two restaurants where I would find potentially access. We did speak to Mayor Griffith about this. And again, building stock is very different, is old in Tivoli, it's dated, it's difficult. A lot of these buildings are not readily achievable, so they are exempt under the ADA because of that. However, there are other modifications you can do. We talked about maybe QR codes, or the mayor will talk more about that if he chooses to. But Lisa's willing to work with us, and there are, you know, resources available. But Sean, if you wanted to add a little bit to that?
When we met with some of your business leadership months ago, again, through the courtesy of your mayor, we're, as Lisa said, we're sensitive that if you're a small business, regardless of what the industry you may be in, to modify your building, it can get really expensive. But Lisa did put together, and we've got handouts, and it's just a few pages, here's some low-cost solutions that would at least provide a temporary interim solution that wouldn't break the bank for your money. Now, more long-term, you, we'd like to see, you know, the investments made, the capital investments made, but that would be asking a lot of the municipality or for small businesses. Now, your municipality, your village, has been very good, we keep a pretty close eye on this, securing grants. There's regularly, usually about a million plus in grants available through the county, and you can only apply if you're one of the municipalities. But that's not bad odds. And your mayor's done a wonderful job. We like to see that because there's an incentive for the municipality to use the funds, if you're going to use the funds for any type of ADA improvements or compliance, you get extra points for that on the application. And that's great for the municipality in a way of securing some funds that they wouldn't otherwise have. What about folks in the business sector? You can't apply for these municipal funds. You can't apply for most funds that, you know, are available for, if they're above mineral estate, but there are private grant opportunities. And sitting in front of you are, it's our mayor, two people, Lisa and myself, who are pretty, you know, pretty experienced at writing grants, particularly Lisa. And I have good experience as well. And what we want to be able to say is, you know, to any businesses that are interested, we'll help you. And we'll, I'll ask Lisa maybe, because I can never remember them. What's the top of your head, you know, like three or four private grants?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I've gotten several grants from TRI. Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley is one. The Christopher Reeve Foundation, the Disability Inclusion Fund, the Borealis Foundation, Mother Caprini's a very good one. And some of these grants, they're unrestricted funding, a lot of them, where you can utilize it, you can structure a program. I shouldn't say unrestricted. The Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley does have community grants that you can use for general operating funds, to support staffing, or put towards an existing project. But a lot of these, Christopher Reeve in particular, that grant, those RFPs will come out sometime in the fall and the spring. And they're looking for, they're looking to fund programs that provide enhanced, because we all know Christopher Reeve is tried, so the focus obviously is on increased accessibility and visibility for people with disabilities. So capital funding, funding for capital improvements and other types of programs and architectural modifications to businesses and municipalities to make them more accessible. Mother Caprini's another good one. They're focused a lot on healthcare, but other things too. Programs dealing with substance abuse, you know, augmenting, increasing, or expanding programs that address health disparities among disenfranchised populations. But all those sources, all those types, all those avenues would be good to explore. And my business card's on the table, I think we put them back there. So if you are interested, we're happy to, you know, give me a call, send me an email. I'll get, I mean, I might not get right back to you, I'm so busy, but I certainly will get back to you within a few days if you have a question. So feel free, please.
Yeah, and I think that's really what we're hoping for, is that we could work with a small business in the village of Tivoli, one or two, you know, on some interim solutions, and then assist with pursuit of some private funding through a grant on a, you know, modest project. We could do that. I think we'd feel that would be a good accomplishment. And you could see then, we could use your village, your municipality, the sense of inclusion that you offer here in this village, by being here tonight, through what we've seen with your mayor. We'd like to, we'd like to use that to encourage, instead of fighting, you know, all the time, if we could maybe shame some of the other municipalities into rising to this level, then we, that would be a pretty good accomplishment.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it'd be great to just model what inclusivity looks like, you know? I mean, and again, you know, there is a lot of mis, it doesn't, there are, it's not this instrumentable task to, to address, you know, accessibility, noncompliance in municipalities or businesses. I mean, we hear from businesses all the time, the grandfathered in, which is not correct. Every, because every business is mandated to be compliant unless it's not readily achievable. If it's a very small little mom and pop that just can't afford to put in a, you know, an elevator, a flight of stairs or something, that's, but most businesses can afford to do something. Or they think it's under employment, a little different, we're not talking about, we're talking about business, but it's a switching there, some of the same misinformation about providing, you know, technology to somebody who's, you know, that might need it, that's a, you know, like, for instance, I don't know, like a Zoom text machine for somebody in school, we always deal with that a lot, a student with a visual disability or an ASL interpreter, we do, we do a lot of advocacy around deaf advocacy. It's not that expensive to provide that type of accommodation. And, you know, again, you're modeling inclusivity, you're demonstrating that you're a welcoming community, and you're, you know, it's the right thing to do. It's a civil right to be a part of your community. It's a civil right for people with disabilities to be able to access all the, everything everyone else does, you know, that the general public does. And I think because people are so locked out of the process, and they've become invisible, they're, they aren't able to access restaurants, they aren't able to participate fully and equitably. And so it's becoming, it's discriminatory, and it's really not, communities are just lacking the breadth of diversity that they could, they could be with every other population. You know, when you think about all the disenfranchised populations that are, that are giving voice, that are, that are out there, that are acknowledged and recognized, it doesn't seem that disability's one of them. So, there you go. I'm jumping on my soapbox here, so, I mean, I don't know, if you, I mean, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Do you have any comments?
No, no, I just want to, you know, thank you so much for reaching out to all of us in Dutchess County. And, you know, I want to be very forthright that I was utterly ignorant of so much of this, and I want to thank you for enlightening me personally. But then I also happen to be in elected office in a little place where I could maybe actually do something with that enlightenment. And, you know, Tivoli's got a long way to go, there's no question, but I know that the board and I are very, very committed to doing everything that we can and everything that we should. And I think that your approach of, you know, we understand the challenges, but we're here to help. You know, I hope more people in the public and private realms of Dutchess County will take you up on what, you know, this opportunity to have such, you know, open and inviting people as ourselves to really do it, it's the right thing to do, that's it. So, yeah, and anyone, you know, we'd like to allow some time tonight. I want to thank you again all for coming. I know I did some personal inviting to say, you don't want to miss this, and I want you here to meet these people, so I'm really grateful that you came. So have a conversation for a while, we'll see how it goes. We only have two little, we have one little resolution later, so don't worry about it. First meeting, this is important. Yeah, anyone? John?
Hi. Yes, I was one of the people who Joel reached out to invite directly, appreciate that. And there certainly are some difficulties in Tivoli, I can, I can tell you. And you said that it's a, it's a civil right, it's mandated that businesses require, are required to be ADA compliant. But you also said it's up to, like, me to, you know, if I don't, if I want to get in somewhere and I can't, to go to get a lawyer, which I don't really, that's not something I'm prepared to do, really. But I'm wondering if, when a, when a business makes major renovations and gets a building permit, is there any sort of enforcement in terms of, at that point, in terms of ADA compliance?
That's a great question. Whenever there's a renovation, it triggers Title III. And I think what I've noticed is that a lot of building inspectors will issue a certificate of occupancy, even though the, the structure is not being, is not going to be brought into compliance. So like where I live, there are two restaurants that had did some mess and worked on the facade of the building, thinking, oh, great, now I can get into the pastry shop that I've been wanting to get into. It's going to trigger Title III. And they just, what they did is just read to the steps and made them more beautiful. You know, and I mentioned to the building inspector, wrote a letter, and he said the grandfathered in, historic designation, all the misinformation that we hear all the time. So the building inspectors, in answer to your question, don't always, are not well-versed on the ADA. They follow the International Building Code. I think, Sean, maybe you may be a little more specific on that, or the New York State Code, but it's not as tightly, it's not as tightly enforced as the regulations under Title III of the ADA. So you could file, instead of hiring an attorney, you could file with the Division of Human Rights in New York State, or the Department of Justice. They're very overwhelmed. Or your Human Rights Commission, Dutchess doesn't have one. So, or an attorney. Or you could write, you know, do, you know, we, in our tribe, by the way, all of our services are free to people with disabilities and their families. And we do, and I do it personally, and I have staff also that will assist people. And we do, and I do it personally, and I have staff also that will assist people to self-advocate, to write letters to their public officials, to their, their building inspectors. We have letters, template letters that we can help you with, to see if they, you know, to work with them, to bring, to advocate, self-advocate for compliance. But, so it's not, it's a very, I don't want to discourage you, but it's, it's difficult to, you've noticed a lot of municipalities, it's very difficult.
One other question was, you, you talked about maybe using businesses in Tivoli that, that maybe you could help to get grants, to become compliant. So would you approach those businesses and say, look, you know, we see that you're not compliant, but, you know, maybe we can help you get the funding needed to do, you know, these maybe simple approaches?
Yeah, I mean, I think most businesses, you know, I think there's a lot of awareness around, I think they want to, they just don't know how to, or they feel it's just, it's going to be very costly. But we can certainly assist them with grants, grants that would provide that type of support. I wouldn't be able to write a grant for them, I can certainly, you know, provide them technical support in that and maybe referral resources and jump into the same. Or just temporary solutions that maybe don't cost a lot, where you could certainly, you know, accommodate somebody with a visual, with a deaf, mobility disability, you know, while you're applying for grants or even if you don't have the resources to do so. So there's all, all kinds of, you know, strategies for that, to address that.
But the person with the disability has to initiate it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, yeah, I, you know, I, so if businesses aren't accessible, they really should be compliant. If they're not, you know, the person with a disability or an organization like myself or like Tri would bring to their attention, we've written letters to make them aware and provide them with resources to investigate, to research in order to, but it is unfortunately, there is a lack of governance, as I mentioned. And building inspectors don't, are not well-versed and they just don't comply. And businesses, because of the lack of, because there are no damages associated with agreements, you know, lawyers don't take the cases and businesses just don't comply.
If I can jump in on a couple of these, you know, we, we have an opportunity, as we often do in Tivoli, because we're so small, and we all know each other and we all talk, and, you know, I brought these two in to meet with Tivoli merchants and artists, and many of those folks are here. You know, we can do our home role and, you know, the building inspector works for us, right? And we can make sure he does what he's supposed to be doing. I haven't had time to explore this, but I think something, every time something comes to the planning board, that would be a great gateway for Tivoli to assert our values there as well for any kind of project, like, okay, you want to do this to your building? The ADA review can be part of that, and we might be able to, as a municipality, to sort of enshrine that. And, and, you know, rather than people going around and blowing the whistle on non-conforming, non-compliant businesses here, you know, we're trying to take this approach. I got all of you here, you know, we're showcasing, we're coming top down, so it's sort of a nicer way to let everyone know. And, you know, I, I know that a lot of business owners are here who will go back and speak amongst yourselves. And so I, I think we have an opportunity in Tivoli to come at these things sort of, you know, a big umbrella rather than you, you, and you. And that'll be, I think, more successful broadly. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing. I mean, I think we're all potentially people with disabilities and some of us are very close to becoming that group. The idea that people feel like, oh, this is about somebody else, I think it's about all of us. So I just wanted to thank you and also say how pleased I am that Tivoli has, has played this role. It just seems to be really shameful, what you just said earlier about the, none of the municipalities even seem to know that they were supposed to have something on their website, let alone think about a plan for their, so I'm just wondering about how you're trying to get, apart from the individual thing, which I think is very important, but how could we sort of think about trying to generate more publicity about what's going on in Dutchess County? I don't know if there are other ways to sort of expand the coalition, or maybe pick a day, when it's, I don't know if there are, I come out of the human rights field and to me, this is a very important human right, but we usually have days on the Internet for the human rights, there's something where people come together and you mentioned the, I don't know what it was, the event you mentioned.
Inclusion Fest.
But if there's a way that we could do more with that and maybe even add something to it to get more publicity, just so people know and begin to shame a little bit these municipalities into, you know, being as good as Tivoli, I mean, that should be an incentive.
Thank you for the kind, kind words. It is not lost on us that we will be electing a new county executive in this county in November. And we have been able to reach out to the candidates of the major bodies. In fact, they were extending invitations and both, today credit did attend. And we're putting this subject in the face of both candidates.
Right, so we developed a question, a Q and A, a questionnaire, and we're just putting the finishing touches on how we're going to be sending that out to both. And it's all dealing with, the questions are all about what their positions are on inclusivity with regard to housing, you know, Title ADA compliance, zoning regulations, that kind of thing. And those, when we get those questions back, when they complete them, they'll be posted on my website, on the Tri website, and also we'll be sending out a constant contact so that people will be informed as to, you know, how these candidates feel about inclusivity and what they're willing to do to promote that. And also, to answer to, I'm sorry, your name again?
Oh, Larry.
Larry, I'm sorry, Larry.
I didn't know my name.
Yes, no, it's okay, thank you. So, in order, in order, so we, we work with the media a lot. We've had Spectre News has covered us. We've had a few articles in the Red Oak Daily Catch and the Valley Pilots, printed something. I just interviewed with the Highland Current, it's a Plutnum paper, although it does cover parts of Dutchess, all about Title III. We've been really trying to adapt the disability partnership, generate awareness and engage the public and our officials and partners about really just shining a light on this issue. So we've got, we're building momentum toward it, right? And, you know, it's looking good, it's looking really good, you know? So, but thank you for that question, it's a very important one. But Inclusion Fest, I think, you know, so we're, Tri, the acronym for organizations, and a member of a statewide organization called NIEL, too many acronyms here, but our association does, has a public relations firm. And what they do is they do a lot of, they do a lot of, they have an awareness campaign throughout the state and each county that they coordinate to raise awareness around the ADA and disability rights. So that, we are, we partner with them and they, we have several events each year that we do as well. So there is a lot going on, which is great, very encouraging. And, you know, advocacy is tough work, isn't it, to keep that, you know?
And we do have some follow-ups with the local businesses here.
We do, yes, we do, which is great, yeah, absolutely.
And first, what would follow, are the colleges and universities more responsive? And are they part of, I mean, making sure that all students, how have they responded?
Well, I can say both. Well, I can just say that we have a wonderful working relationship with all of them. Well, Vassar is right, is very close to my office. So, you know, we've been partnering with them, with Maris as well, Dutchess County Bosse's, Dutchess Community College or whatever, in Bosse's. I have a, I have a, Bard, we dealt with Bard a little bit over the voting policy side issue, voting access issue. So, yeah, I think, I think they've been responsive. You know, they're a little more sensitized to it, it's like student population, you know, young people seem to be more energized and, you know, more aware of disparity and disenfranchised manner of discrimination. So we've had good luck with them, with student, student populations and, and the administrators
Anyone else, any questions or comments for our guests?
I just want to add one thing. The positive thing is that even though there are lots of non-accessible businesses in Tivoli, the people who are running them are always helpful. They're always willing, you know, we'll get you in, you know, and they get a couple of people up out and, you know, bump me up the stairs or whatever's required, bring the food out or, you know, so even though some of these businesses can't afford it, you know, it's too much for them to become compliant, they are, you know, totally happy to, to help.
And that's a welcoming community. And if I, if I might say, I, I just think that comes from leadership. I think it comes from, you know, leadership of wanting to foster that sentiment, foster inclusivity, and it's, it translates to, throughout the community. So I think the mayor-
I'd just like to say that if I have that spirit, it's because I'm a Tivolian. I had that before. But I think, you know, what John puts his finger on, and you've alluded to already, I mean, that, we're, if the intention is there, then we can keep working on the rest of it, you know? And I remember when you and I went around a few years ago and, you know, a few things happened, but I feel like now, you know, with, with their help, we can really keep the momentum and build the momentum. It's, it's, it's that intention that goes a long way before, you know, people, well, grandfather, conversation over, right? It's the first thing. So thank you so much, very, very much. Great to have you. I think the report's just gonna, we're sort of gonna take a five-minute pause here so people can go or stay or maybe chat a little bit with our guests. And I want to thank you all again so much for being here tonight, because it was important.
Thanks, Joel.
Okay, we will move on from that wonderful presentation and conversation to the Village Clerk's Report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes, in the past month, there were 474 trash tags that were sold. Deputy clerk attended a planning board meeting. Two payrolls were processed by Treasurer Day. And then coming up, the clerk's office will be closed on Monday, September 4th, in observance of Labor Day.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have been busy. We have four sets of minutes in our packet. Tonight is actually our fourth meeting this month, so thanks for, look, we're, we're losing them left and right, but we still got, these two are going the distance. Is there a motion to approve the following July 19th regular meeting, August 2nd special meeting, August 9th workshop, and August 10th special meeting minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys are gonna get to take turns tonight on that motion, so. Moving on to the Treasurers' Report. It was a big month for us. We are at $158,890.84, which is out of the general fund, that's also the total. 158, 890, 84. Two things I want to call out in that Treasurers' Report. $64,000 of that is for a new, new to us, a used light-duty rescue truck that we are acquiring for the Tivoli Fire Department, which we're very excited about. That is in Houston, Texas, and several members of the department are gonna be flying down there next week with the check to give it a final look over and then drive it back here to Tivoli. It's cheaper to fly people and drive it back than have this thing put on a truck and driven up here, so. That's the happy big bill. We have $27,000 bill from Central Hudson for streetlights. They sent us 10 months of bills all at once. Now, as we all know, Central Hudson is not doing very well in the public eye these days for all of their billing practices. So here's one more little horror story. I just, this morning, heard Congressman Ryan on the radio talking about it. They've got a potential hike coming, and a lot of our elected officials, Senator Inchi, Congressman Ryan, are really holding their feet to the fire. And so I'm actually pretty excited to write a letter to those elected officials about what just happened to us. Fortunately, we've got the cash on hand and we can do this, but how are we supposed to plan, you get 10 months of bills all at once? Not good, so. Central Hudson, please. Get it together, okay? With that, is there a motion to accept the Treasurers' Report?
Some of them.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay the bills? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the zoning report. Trustee Paul Beano, please.
So this month, we had, excuse me, eight building permits reviewed, seven permits issued, one complaint, one complaint investigated, zero zoning property maintenance violations, zero tickets, zero municipal searches, 10 inspections. There was code enforcement provided by Z3.
Thank you very much. We have two items on our agenda tonight. We have, we're gonna discuss what's going on with the LoSAP special election, and we also have a resolution awarding a crosswalks, Crosswalk Projects, did I say that wrong?
No, somebody just asked what LoSAP is.
Okay. Length of Service Award Program for the Fire Department, so. And then we also have a resolution awarding a, the best value low bid for a crosswalk at Broadway and Woods Road over there. I say that brief introduction because this is the time when we ask for public comment on agenda items. So if you have any things to say or ask about those two things, we welcome your comments. And there's gonna be public comment at the end as well, so. Kathy?
Well, given the fact that that crosswalk at Woods Road is, is not an agenda item, I think there's a problem. It's different from the crosswalk at Clay Hill because Clay Hill abuts on a tee, and the crosswalk at Woods Road goes into only one side of Woods Road. If you're walking towards Woods Road, you'll be walking in accordance with the law on that's facing traffic. But what about all the people who are walking toward Broadway and want to get to that crosswalk? I think we need to, at the, at the end of the road, so that they can be safe crossing to the other side of Woods Road and then across Broadway.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? So, this crosswalk project is actually sort of a annex to our sidewalk project. I don't know if anyone saw my email today, but they're finally gonna start working on that sidewalk that we won the grant a year ago. We were lucky enough to get some low bids, so there was money left in that county grant, and we were able to go back to the county and say, we know that you and we have long been interested in possibly a crosswalk over there. Could we use the rest of that money for this, even though it wasn't in the original scope? And fortunately, they said yes. I'm not sure that there's gonna be two crosswalks in this particular effort, but we could possibly add one going across Woods so that you could get over to the one that crosses Broadway? Yeah. So, I figure anything's better than what we got now, right? Which is nothing? Kelly Gardner?
Could I just make a suggestion? When you get to that point of that crosswalk, could you post, you know, when you make the announcement, digital however you're going to handle it, reminding people that there is a standard law about walking facing traffic? Just as a reminder, because many people don't realize that. With all the walkers we have in this area and living on the back end of the loop, it's dangerous. And now people, especially young people, are walking with their beer bottles. They hear nothing, and if they're not walking facing traffic, you know, it's just an accident waiting to happen. And Woods is, well, they're all there, but Woods is there, there is no sidewalk at all. Just a-
We'll pull that into our grant announcement.
Just sort of pilot up here with all the other things.
Sure. Jeanette?
Going back, referring to Central Hudson. Last year, I mentioned that the light in the park was malfunctioning, and I don't know if it still is or again is, but it goes out right in the darkest part of the walk.
The one by the wellhouse?
Yeah, yeah. There was also one at nine recently that is the same.
There's ever a street light out, and I'm gonna get back to the agenda, because this is agenda items only portion of comment, but just, just email me the poll number.
Okay.
And we actually have a pretty good contact at Central Hudson. And we actually have a pretty good contact at Central Hudson. Every poll has a plate with about a five-digit number on it, and we've had a lot of them addressed, so if there's one out on your street, I would love to know, because I like sending it to them.
Thanks.
Sure. Okay, trustees, so discussion of the LoSAP special election. You may have heard in the last several weeks that, like, the state changed the law so that municipalities can increase the LoSAP contribution. In our area, for what, 17 years, or 16 years, it's been $500 a year. We're now able to go up to $1,200 a year. We have two fire departments in the town, Village Tibbely, Village Reddick, and both of us are proposing to increase that, with our wonderful volunteer, you know, first responders who do everything they do for free. This is a very nice way to say, we are so grateful and thank you, and we wish it could be more, but we have an opportunity to make it a little more right now. In order to do that, we have to pass, no, there's a referendum among the voters, right? This was originally gonna be on the General Election Day in November, along with elections for the Town Council. For a series of reasons, that can't happen, that cannot happen, we've been through it with the county and state boards of elections. So this is what's gonna happen now. The two villages are gonna have to hold our own special elections. So both villages are gonna do them on the same day, and that day is gonna be October 24th. It's a Tuesday, like, most of our elections are. Tibbely's will be at the firehouse. I believe it's gonna be noon to 9:00, which is generally what our village elections are. So, we wanted to sort of start talking about this now, because it's been a bit of a pivot from what was going on two weeks ago. So, special election, referendum by the voters, should we increase the annual LoSAP funding from $500 to $1,200? And the way that program works is if you're in the, in the fire department, and you put in your five years, and then you attend a certain percentage of calls, a certain number of calls per year, you get credit into the system, and that's all recorded over your years of service, and is it, I believe it's 65, when you turn 65, you can get several thousand dollars as a sort of, you know, it's not a full retirement for sure, but it's something, so we're interested in that. So, special election for LoSAP, both villages, Tuesday, October 24th. Okay, next we have the resolution authorizing award for the Broadway Crosswalks Project. We had two contractors bid on that, and Frank Bosberg and Sons is the lower bid by quite a bit. So this resolution says that whereas a portion of funding for such project is expected to come from a CDBG grant administered by Dutchess County, whereas the proposals for the project were publicly opened and read on August 10th pursuant to the village's procurement policy, after review of the bids received, Crawford and Associates Engineering, our village engineer, recommended the approval of the bid to Frank Bosberg and Sons Incorporated with the base bid of $19,300. So that is what we're proposing to do. Again, that sidewalk work is gonna start next week, and so I would say, it's the same contractor that we're gonna award this to, he'll be there with all his equipment, so I imagine that crosswalk will come pretty quickly on the heels of the sidewalk. Trustees, is there a motion to adopt this resolution awarding the Broadway Crosswalk Project to Frank Bosberg and Sons? Is there a second?
Second.
Do a very short roll call. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Congratulations to Frank Bosberg, and we look forward to having him here, working on that. Our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, September 20th, at 7:00 PM, with a workshop at 6:00 PM, right here at Watts the Baxter Hall, and our regular workshop will be September 13th at 6:00. Moving into committee reports, trustee Baldino has the court report.
So this month, we had a total of $3,280 in fines, $829 in surcharges, 15 in slip fees, a total of $4,124.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Schilling is not here, but I'll just say that he and I, and Supervisor McKeon, and Denny, Denny's last name?
Collet.
Collet, yes. All met out at the Tibbely landfill on Freeborn, which is about a five-acre grassy hill, to look into the possibility of putting a solar installation out there. A lot of communities are putting solar panels on top of landfills, and we have landfill. So trustee Schilling is kind of spearheading that for our board, but we're having serious conversations with the town, because of course, the village owns that property, but it's in the town, so hopefully that will go further, and I'm sure trustee Schilling will have more to say about it next month. Trustee Mangieri, please.
Mangieri. I think the monthly police report for the month of July, there was a total of 16 incidences, nine uniform traffic tickets were issued, and nine parking tickets, and there were zero arrests.
That's good.
And I just wanted to say that Tibbely Community Day was awesome.
Yes.
I had fun, I enjoyed myself, and I enjoyed seeing all of my neighbors. It was good to see some old and new neighbors, and some faces I had not seen in quite some time, that took me by surprise, but all in all, it was, the general feeling, like it always is, it was great.
Wonderful.
It was a good time. I know Emily would be sharing a lot about, you know, her feelings on that.
Yeah.
And the Tibbely Park is going good, too, the camp, and we had our special meeting in the park, which was great, and I look forward to continue talking about that. And, yeah, exciting news for Tibbely.
Anything good going on at the end of September?
Um, oh, yes, I forgot, I failed to refer. Tibbely Street Painting Day is upon us, and we've come together and decided on a date. It would be Saturday, September 30th, with a rein date of October 1st, and an extra rein date of October 7th. Mother Meager better not mess it up, she gets one shot on the 30th, and that's it, otherwise she and I are gonna battle. They grab, it's been really hard to keep up, thanks to her.
Yeah, so, street painting on September 30th, and I believe that's one week after Harsh Gravel? Yeah, so, two great Saturdays in September for our area. Yes, if the deputy mayor were here, she would be curling, as she always does, about the Tibbely Free Library and all the wonderful things they do, so, there, be crowed, come into our library and enjoy everything that they have to offer. Let's see, so I want to just state again that the Broadway sidewalk work is expected to begin, could be even Monday, the 21st, weather permitting. All that stone's gonna get removed. People have asked, what is the fate of the broken bluestone bits? The village is gonna keep all of that, just like we kept all the stone from the bridge when it was redone, and how we've been keeping all the stone from the long-buried sidewalk on Woods Road, to repurpose in other places in the village, so, people can stop asking me if they can have it. They're gonna have it in their village, how about that? And that's supposed to take possibly three to four weeks, weather is the main determinant of that. And also, the week of the 28th, it looks like we're gonna bring back TJR, the company who did a lot of our paving projects last fall. They did the culvert in the development, they did a lot of intersections in the development, they did some work on Spring Street. They also did work on North Road, which just isn't quite up to the standard of the rest of the work. So, I'm very pleased that they're gonna come back, and they're gonna put another course of asphalt on North Road from the main intersection up to the Masonic driveway, which we already had some areas where it was failing after a single winter, so there'll be some more busy work over there the week of the 28th. And at this time, I would like to ask if there's any public comment on any topic?
I'm a great mom. Sarah Boden, I panned up, Sarah Boden, Wood Road, longtime listener, first-time caller, I think. I'm going to say, as a mom of three kids that are enjoying the park this weekend, last week, at the rec camp, just how much we appreciate that service. I know you don't have to do it, but it's really appreciated, and today I went early to pick someone up for dentist appointment, and it was just really cool to see all the groups of kids that are just enjoying the park, they're having fun with each other, some of them are off reading by themselves under a tree, so, just want to say thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I know a bunch of us in this room have benefited from that program, but it's really, really appreciated. I know, like, a lot of times people show up just to complain, or to, like, say they don't like something, so I want to make sure to always say the positive thing, and, you know, things like, just going back to the topic earlier, things like the proposed crosswalk at Woods Road on Broadway, you know, those things make our village a lot safer for everybody. I've got kids, again, who are crossing that constantly, and just to know specifically where to cross, I think for all of us will be really, really beneficial, and, you know, it goes to that thing that Lisa was saying earlier, that, like, it's leadership of the community, of course, it's also all of us coming together and being part of things, and it's just a really good place to live, and the park program is part of that, so thank you for buying the camp, it's great.
You're welcome. I have been having fun at camp this last two weeks, I almost said. I don't get up that early usually, but it air blasts, and I think, seeing, seeing a shy kid on the first day, three days later, just owning camp is magical. A little five-year-old, seeing the bigger kids taking care of the little kids unprompted, which I've seen a lot of, is amazing, you know, a little kid stumbles, and they're sort of like, ah, big kids, take care of them, I mean, it's incredible to watch that, and, you know, they're gonna be the ones sitting in this room in 30, 40 years, so gotta indoctrinate them into this community, right? So, thank you for those comments, Sarah. Anything else? So, we have a tradition here in the village, that when we lose someone, we like to adjourn our board meetings in their memory, and we recently lost a very significant Tivolian, that being Bryce Martin, who, of course, is not only just a major artist of the last half-century with a global reputation, but also someone who spent over two decades in this little community and became a Tivolian, and we send our acknowledges to the entire Martin family, and they've, you know, Bryce definitely left his mark on our community, and part of that mark is the consistent support of all of the village festivals, Winterfest, street painting, Sesko Centennial, the ice rink, and then the list goes on and on. The generosity, and the quiet generosity, I always like to think, I have no idea, but my sense is that he was looking for a place where he could maybe just be sort of a regular guy after all his fame and whatnot, and I think, I hope that if that was true, that he found it here in Tibbely, so. With that, is there's a motion to adjourn in memory of Bryce Martin? Second?
Second.
And we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, folks. 8:15 PM.